Okay, good evening. It's 5:30. I'm going to call the Otomo City Council meeting to order, and if everybody would rise, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
The next item is the city administrator's report to the council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Tonight, I have for the council and the public a report, after-action report and response summary from Tim Richmond, who is the Director of Waplo County Emergency Management. And he wanted to, the full report is in the packets, available for the public to be able to review, and he was going to hit some of the highlights and give you an overview for the council and general public. I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, Phil. I'll try and keep this brief. And if I don't, Chris said she'd pull me out of here with the hook.
You have three minutes. Just kidding, just kidding. We'll give you more time.
I told Phil, it's like elementary school.
But she will pull you out with a hook.
Oh, what's that?
She will pull you out with a hook.
I took her serious. I trust you've all seen this in your packets, but then I gave you the printed copy as well. And I want to kind of just focus on the two nice colored documents, which is the summation of the feedback surveys that are also in here. So this isn't a traditional AAR, because those are extremely boring, and they talk about, how did you do with your 32 core capabilities? And they're just a dry read. Well, which of the core capabilities did we use during COVID? All of them. So I won't bother with that format. So when Linnell and I sat down a few weeks ago to finally get to this, a year post, it was kind of nice to have a little time between the end of that mission and now, to really review that and give it a fresh look. And some of this stuff in here is just kind of notes I kept along the way. And I thought it would be nice to include, to take you down that road with us, that we spent that 50 intense weeks managing public messaging information, taking it from the Department of Public Health and CDC, converting it, delivering it to our public, and all the different methods that we did it, at the same time delivering PPE, at the same time having meetings with all of our local healthcare entities to figure out what our resources statuses were, and what do we need for the next week. And that just went on for 50 weeks straight, working double shifts and seven days a week. It was pretty intense. So to boil all that down and into the feedback from our stakeholders, we learned that our strengths, first and foremost, was our coalition in our county. So the Waplo County Healthcare Coalition met prior to COVID. There's 21 different entities that's part of that. So that's everybody from hospitals, clinics, EMS, specialty care providers, anybody delivering healthcare in the county. We were doing weekly meetings to, just to keep on top of things. Those pre-relationships ahead of the pandemic really paid off, and I think that was probably our largest strength as a community. The next box is just utilizing incident command system. So there's kind of three thoughts there: communication and direction, which is considered command and control, communication to facilities, which is operational communication, and then just networking, which is operational coordination. And that's a lot of fancy terms to say, you got to know where your buddies are, and who has what resources, and be able to be comfortable to make those phone calls and have that constant conversation. And then at the bottom, we had three things that I always say, in emergency management is our real core function, and that's managing information, managing expectations, and managing resources. And we did all those things. And a lot of that you'll see documented in this book. On the flip side, we wanted to know what our opportunities are. If you live through an event like that, there's some things you can do better, even though I think we did really well as a community. The first two is no surprise to anybody, because it's the conversation in everybody's world, and that's staffing. So that was the Achilles' heel to all of our healthcare entities. It still is today, and it's going to be an active conversation for quite some time. And there's a lot of different factors to that. I'm sure you're involved in those conversations every day. We talk about the baby boomer generation retiring. They predicted that 20 years ago. Some of it's post-pandemic response, and then just generational changes. So our current generations look at work and life differently, and they behave differently, and they approach it differently. And it's not always necessarily bad, but it's different. And so you take all that combined into the same moment, creates this HR problem that the park is to deal with, right? But everybody's dealing with it. From the Emergency Management Office standpoint, we, I've asked the commission for a little bit of help, because it's hard to keep up with all the demands of the community, and we're going to add an administrative assistant to help with some of my initiatives. And we were very calculated in doing a part-time position and keeping some of those expenses down, because one of the things we are very cognizant of, cognizant of, is to keep the tax asking as low as possible, and still provide optimal services. And that's the same thing you folks struggle to do every day as well. Third thing was communication. So I felt like we knocked the communication out of the park, but we can always do better. And one of the things was, gosh, we got to meet people where they're at. And so where are people at? On their phones all the time. And so we're working on a community engagement app that will be available to all jurisdictions in the county. Basically, my thought was this. I started down the path to create an emergency alerting app, and I thought, oh, goodness. Emergencies don't happen all the time, and if that's the only time people use an app, they're not going to know where to find or what do you do with it. If we create this app that is a combination of emergency information plus everyday information from municipal services and combine them, then that's just an everyday resource that citizens can go to to find stuff. And so when we're in crisis mode, they're used to that, and they go, oh, okay, I can go here and figure out where I need to find X. And so we're working on that. And we received some grant money from Legacy to do that. And then last is related to an agenda topic tonight. One of the things that we recognized we needed was a central location to be a hub for all of these resources and distribution of things. And so that opportunity with the old Otomo Transit was just a very serendipitous thing that has happened, that will bode very well for all of us. So that's my quick summation. I've avoided the hook. If you get a chance to read through this, and you have any questions or feedback or comments, I'm always open for that, because that's how we learn and get better. But I wanted to just share that document with you. In the front of it, there also is a reflection from our Public Health Director, Linnell Deers. I asked her, I said, Linnell, with all of your experience, just give us a letter of reflection. And that's what you see leading the document. So, any questions for me?
Well, I'll ask the council. But I guess, Tim, I want to at least express my appreciation, because in my former job at River Hills, I thought you and Linnell had those weekly Zoom meetings with all the healthcare agencies in Waplo County, and you did an outstanding job of keeping everybody up to date, and everybody could share who was having supply-demand issues, and who needed this, and who needed that. So I totally agree. I thought the communication was extremely well planned and well thought out, and I just want to thank you for that, because it really made a big difference with everybody being able to stay on the same page.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we really are blessed in this community. We don't, we take it for granted sometimes. We have excellent resources and a lot of great people, and sometimes we just don't talk about it enough.
Does council have any comments or questions for Tim?
I have a comment. So I would build on that communication, too. I think that you all did a very good job of having communication and not just English. And I think you had some assistance with that, and I would hope that when you have the app, we'll be able to see some of that communication continue, because I think you really excelled in that area, too, to ensure that everyone had access to communication about COVID and updates on that. So I thank you for that, too.
Thank you for that, and I love that feedback. That was a huge learning curve, all the different languages we have in this community. And I learned when we were doing the vaccine clinic at Evans, talking to the school folks, that they have 30 different languages. And we were doing six or seven. And kudos to JBS, they were huge. Iowa is at the International Center, I think it is, was a huge resource. But that was, that was one heck of a learning curve.
Any other comments or questions from council for Tim? Or any questions for Phil? Do you have anything else you want to add in your report?
Not tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, Tim. Appreciate the update and the summary. Okay, the next item is where I ask if anybody wants to speak on any of our agenda items tonight. Hopefully, you've filled out one of these sheets of paper if you'd like to speak. Does anybody have any items that are on our agenda tonight that you'd like to speak to? Okay.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property locally known as 2417 Emma Street, Otomo, Iowa, to Waplo County Emergency Management Commission.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Phil Rath, our city administrator, is going to handle this.
Yeah, so piggybacking off of Tim Richmond's comments a moment ago, one of the opportunities that they had experienced and expressed was an interest in having a building or property. And with the replacement or the movement of transit out of the 2417 Emma Street facility, it was an ideal location for their operations. It had office space, it had storage, it had garage space, just about everything that they really needed. We didn't have any other use for the building for current operations that we have. And if Waplo County Emergency Management were to build or purchase a different property, the city would have a financial stake in that. So we were kind of paying for something either way. City Attorney prepared documentation to convey this property. It was reviewed and approved by the emergency management pending abstract and clean title opinion before they signed. So I don't know if anyone from the public has anything, but...
Do you want to give the dollar amount, so that everybody knows what that is?
Gee, I didn't bring that up with me. Oh, yeah, right there? Okay. $182,500. And that was, I'm sorry, that is half of the recognized appraised value for the property.
Does anybody in the audience, since this is a public hearing, does anybody have any questions for Phil regarding this item? If not, does council have any questions, comments for Phil? Okay, hearing that, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 202023, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property locally known as 2417 Emma Street, Otomo, Iowa, to Waplo County Emergency Management Commission. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 202023.
Here's the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32112023, an ordinance establishing regulations applicable to the use of utility terrain vehicles and amending chapters 23 and 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Otomo. Recommendation, pass second consideration of ordinance number 32112023.
Do we have a motion for the recommendation?
Here's the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to speak to this.
Yeah, so, what's that? We've had this before you at the last meeting and in a couple of work sessions. Just a quick synopsis, last year, June 13, the governor signed House File 2130. That included changes to Iowa Code chapters 321 and 321i, which pertain to the regulation, operation of all-terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles, or UTVs, on various roadways. That, the passage of that bill neither restricted the city's authority to designate roads for ATV or UTV usage, nor did it require the city does, needed to designate any city streets for use. That created some confusion at the time. This ordinance would allow for the usage of UTVs, the utility vehicles on city streets, does not do anything for all-terrain or ATVs.
So I am actually, and I know we have a motion on the table, but I would actually move to amend that motion. And I don't know, I'm still learning the process, so I apologize. But I would actually recommend to pass the second consideration, waive the third, and then pass and adopt ordinance number 3211-2023.
I'd second that.
So would I need to re?
Nope. We'll just go with the amended motion if everybody's in agreement with that.
I agree with that.
So then I'll go ahead and take the role if there's any other question. No? Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Presentation of annual city street finance report fiscal year 2022. Recommendation, receive information from report reviewing fiscal year 2022.
Do we need to take action on this, or just review? Okay, so Phil?
Yeah, there's no action required on this, and I'll highlight this just a second, just for clarification for anyone in the audience or watching at home. The UTV ordinance was just passed with that last motion, and it would be effective upon publication. So there will not be a third reading that was waived, and we're all set with UTVs after publication. Okay, so the street report that you have, this is an annual finance report, street finance, street finance report, something that's required by the Iowa DOT to be filed annually. It is a summary or reflection of the financial activity related to streets, including the road use fund, any capital projects, general maintenance. Any city that does not file this report is ineligible for future funding from the road use tax. We filed that electronically, and as of this afternoon, it was approved and accepted by the state. So we are in compliance. We don't have to worry about that part. Part of that requirement, though, is that we do have to publicly provide this before council. So I guess real quick summary overview, last year, we got just over $3.5 million in road use tax from the state. That was part of the revenue. In addition to that, we had almost $700,000 in other charges fees for about $4.2 million of revenue that came into the road use fund. The report also includes all of the equipment that we have that is related to the street. Street projects that are listed are ones that were completed and approved by council within that fiscal year. So some of the work could span over a couple of years, or it may not, it may have started one year and not have been completed in the fiscal year. And so that, just to avoid confusion in the reporting or duplication, they only do it once it has been completed and approved. So when you have a final completion and closeout, when that comes before you, that's when that date goes into effect and would be included in the report like this. So in the road use fund, our expenses were about $3.2 million that we had, and we transferred about $211,000 out into capital projects. That, so that's about 3.4. It added about $700,000 to our fund for that. Now, that doesn't mean we have just money just sitting there. That could be projects that were started that are carrying over into that future year. We also have the other special revenue column that is typically related to the trust and agency, the benefits column, debt service, those are for debt for street projects, and that is, that's going down a little bit there. And in capital projects, could be other street-related projects, could be equipment purchases, things to that effect. And that's the number where you can see that one went down quite a bit there, about $2.5 million, $2.7 million, and that is mostly because projects that were completed in one year. So overall, the state approved it. There weren't any corrections or errors that were pointed out, and it's just a report to you on projects related to, or the financial aspect of the streets.
So I guess I have one question, since roads are always a big issue for the public. Can you just real quickly say how much money was spent on the road projects that were done in fiscal year 2022?
Yes. So again, this only counts like what was completed in that, in that year?
Yeah, in that fiscal year.
Yep. So we spent more money than that, but unless it's completed, it doesn't count necessarily. We had, in capital projects, $2.9 million that was spent on roads, construction projects. We also had another $3.2 million that went in. So that is snow removal, that is maintenance, that is chip and seal, that's all of that. So in total expense across all the categories, it was $7.8 million that was spent in roads.
Does council have any questions they want to ask, Phil? Okay, if not, thank you for reviewing that report.
Resolution number 262023, approving and updating company fleet usage and driver safety policy. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 262023.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
And Barb Kojo, our HR Director, I believe is going to cover this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You all passed this policy back in November, I think it was, of last year. And as we worked to start putting things in place, we just noticed some things that we needed to clean up on it. There's no major changes to it. It's just simply, we changed the due date for statement of fringe benefits instead of at the beginning of the quarter to the end of the quarter, so that way we can accumulate it for the year, and it falls correctly on the W2. We added a form in there for an authorization for an MVR. And then we also found out, as we were going through the CDL process, that we do not have to have DOT physicals for the online theory course.
I guess I just want to say, I really appreciate your due diligence in trying to make sure that the written policies and procedures really reflect what's being done. And I know you've spent a lot of time and focus on that, and I think it's been time well spent. And I do appreciate you for really trying to make sure that the written stuff really reflects what's done in practice.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Barb? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 272023, approving updates to the personnel policy handbook. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 272023.
Here's the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Barb, I believe you're going to take this also.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The personnel policy, any of the changes that we have, it is highlighted in that personnel policy, and it's also spelled out on page two. Again, with this one, there's no major changes to anything. It's really updating it to make sure that it's accurate. Under benefits, we did add some more information regarding flexible spending accounts, showing the different kind of accounts that we do offer to our employees. And we also removed the specific dollar amounts, because those do change annually from the IRS. We are sending that information out annually, once the IRS does set those amounts, so that way our employees do know. But that way, we don't have to update that personnel policy every year. We just refer back to the IRS guidelines. Article 19, under employee physicals and medical services, we did add a hearing baseline test to our employees, and that came at the recommendation of IMWCA. So that way, we do have a baseline test, hearing test, for all of our employees. That way, if they are in a position that, you know, does, they are working around loud noises, anything moving forward, we would have that baseline test for them. So that would be something that, moving forward, all of our new employees will have, and we will eventually work on creating baseline tests for our existing employees as well. The other thing with that, too, is that our lifeguards, they will not undergo a physical, because, simply because during their lifeguard certification, they do that through there. But any lifeguard under, any lifeguard will have a drug screen. And so that is clarifying that in the policy there. And then Article 21 pertaining to personnel files and employee access, we just updated the information to reflect that some files may be maintained electronically, and that we meet the requirements maintained by ERISA. And then also spelling out the different files that we do have in the HR office, separating out a personnel file, a confidential file, and a medical file. So again, no major changes, just spelling out what it is that we're doing.
I guess a question that I had that I didn't ask this morning at our prep meeting, do employees, if they get the proper approval, do they have access to all three types of files, or just some of those files?
No, the only ones that employees do have access to is that personnel file. And there are, there is a very specific step that they need to follow through that. Some of the other files, and again, it goes to the same thing, you know, the medical file, supervisors do not have access to that. That is strictly something for HR. Confidential files, same thing. Confidential file houses, background checks, MVRs, you know, child support garnishments, different things like that, things that really just pertain to the employee themselves. They do have access to their personnel file, and there is a process outlined in the personnel policy for them to view that.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Barb?
I guess I just have one, and I know I've talked to Phil about this. One of the things that I found in the personnel handbook that seems to be missing is specific to guidance on plan documentation or procedural information for health insurance. If you look at the, for example, retirement, retirement or prescription drug coverage in the plan, it says, it's just a one-sentence thing that says, refer to the plan documentation. And for some reason, health insurance seems to be the one thing in the personnel handbook that doesn't have any reference to anything, and it doesn't really follow any set policy. So I think that we need to be considering how we, how we intend to have a policy in place that's going to follow something, because right now, the way that I read the language is, it's extremely ambiguous. So, and that seems to be the, the one piece of the employee benefits that has nothing tying it to anything, really.
So you're saying, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, you want to see something in the personnel policy regarding the plan documentation from health?
Well, so for example, I think it's the, the next article right underneath the health insurance, it's the retirement. And in bold print below it, it says, for changes, and I'm paraphrasing, for changes, refer to plan documentation. That way, if there's any changes to the retirement plan, you don't have to change the policy every time to reflect those changes. It goes back to the plan documentation, but the health insurance doesn't do that. And, and, you know, with the Affordable Care Act, there's been plenty of those changes over the last few years, and it doesn't appear in policy that, that we have anything to reflect any of those changes. And there's no reference back to plan documentation from the policy book to reflect that either. So I guess I'd really like to see that. That just seems to be a big, a big hole in, in our personnel policies.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. Yeah, and I would echo that concern, too, and like to see that maybe be worked on here in the near future, too. I'll take a look at that. I know there's certain things with the ACA that we do have to publicly publish a lot of our health documents, so summary of care and different things, and those are all out on our website for all of our current employees. And we do have that there. We just might be missing the wording in the personnel policy, and I'll look at that.
Is there any other questions by council regarding the updates to the personnel policies handbook? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Resolution number 292023, approving change order number two and accepting the work as final and complete, and approving the final pay request for the Monor Multi-Use Trail Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 292023.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I believe Larry Seals, our Public Works Director, is going to cover this.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This project consisted of a multi-use trail safe route
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This project consisted of a multi-use trail safe route to school on Milner Street from Mary Street north to Richmond Avenue. The corridor had been identified as a connector route in the automobile bicycle and pedestrian plan to help connect the school system and the southern residence areas to the greater Atomo Park system. The project included the installation of an eight-foot wide, 4,115-foot-long multi-use PCC trail sidewalk. Trail has been designed to current design standards to meet all ADA requirements. Change order two decreases the contract sum by $36,857.62 for a new contract sum of $256,209.78. The contractor has completed the work according to the plans and specifications, and this will release all retainage and authorize final payment.
Could this counsel have any questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. This is a time when I ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda tonight. And I believe we have one individual that would like to speak. Is there anybody else that has filled out a paper wanting to talk on any non-agenda item? If not, I guess I would ask Mr. Torres to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Joshua Torres. I live in 545 Ray Street, Atomo. And I just want to talk about a situation, and I'm sorry if my terminology is not the best, but here it is. So back in December, I went through some papers where they were selling some properties. So the first thing I do is I go check out, see what I have to do to acquire those properties. So I did, I got a paper I had to fill out, which I filled out properly, which is weird because sometimes I don't do them, right? But anyways, I did what I thought I was supposed to do. And I understand that as people from the city, and, you know, we do have 25,350 people living here. It's sometimes a job. I do, I do understand that. But when when a person you go to and the person is, I don't know his name because and even right now I don't feel too good because he's not here to to let him know how how the situation or how I feel.
Are you referring to Zach Simonson, our our community development director?
Yes, sir. And, you know, I pretty much did everything, the steps he he told me, which was from filling out the paperwork to do a drawing. But at those times, there was no answers. I just wanted to know if it was going to be possible to sell those properties or not. That that's all I needed to know. If not, so I could move on. But Mr., what's his name again?
Simonson.
Mr. Simonson led me to to draw a picture of, you know, what we want to do, build a a new a bar and grill in these properties. So I sketched everything. I brought it to him. We had a little meeting. And from what I thought and from what he told me, he said there wouldn't be no problem putting this building in here. So I left it at that. He said he was gonna, he asked me for emails. I send emails. Some of you guys got it. I don't know if everybody got it. But after that, there's no no answer again. So I went with Mr. Phil, spoke to him. And I do want to thank you for for reaching out when you said you would. Thank you very much. And he himself said he had some questions. That last meeting we had, I went to his office and I said, hey, Mr., I heard you had some questions for me. He said, no, I don't think I'm going to prove it because it's a metal building and the parking lot's not right. So I, and I do recall when we had that meeting about the sketch, I told him we could do whatever we need to do to be in code. If it has to be smaller, we can make it smaller as long as I can acquire this these properties. So after that, that's all I heard. Until this day, I haven't heard anything else. So.
How how long ago was that that you had that last conversation with Mr. Simonson?
The the last meeting we had here, City Hall, which is what, two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Yeah. And 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 I don't want to come as a as a citizen that wants to put, as, I mean, we all know, you know, people see the worst in our town, and I'm tired of that. I've expressed to Ms. Chris what I want as a concerned citizen, what what many in 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 their screens like to talk. But yet, this is the fullest I've ever seen it. You see what I'm saying?
That's been fuller than this.
Well, I haven't seen it, but I just started too.
Yeah.
And and that's what I I tell her, and I miss Pope, you know. And I'm going to be honest, that day, I, she told me some words not to lose my enthusiasm, and I'm not. That just made my flame just go higher. And I brought my kid here to show them that, yeah, a door might close, but that doesn't mean there's not another one that's going to open. And I want to, Ms. Chris is one of the best person. She's, she told me, you're not, you know, we're the people that people don't see, and I know that. And I want to recognize you for that. And and thank you. Thank you for, when I have a question, you're there to answer it. And and to the other lady, I keep bringing her name too, but, you know, thank you. Thank you for everybody that that is trying to do a change to this town myself. I volunteer if you guys ever need, you know, any input. And I have knowledge of construction, and I'm not trying to sell anything. I'm not trying to sell my name. I'm not trying to sell. I'm trying to make Atomo. When I got here in 2004, I know, I mean, our economics and stuff like that goes up and down. But I remember in Atomo where you had Kmart, you had Target, you had places to go, you know? That's, that's just one thing that I want to bring up to you guys. And I just want to speak a little bit to about the education. It concerns me that my kids come and tell me, hey, Dad, this kid hit my teacher. I'm like, what? Yes. I just want to know when this is gonna be a something. I don't know if teachers just don't speak out because, you know, their jobs or whatnot. But I feel that education right now, and I couldn't go to the meeting where they they want to switch or they want to put the sixth grade on on elementary because I was, I was out of town working. But I wish I would have been there. I know my three ten, three minutes are up, but maybe if, you know, someday we can bring something like that up too. Because, you know, the bad news starts from somewhere. It's just like a house. You you start a house, you got to check your your footers. And then your 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 foundation, and and you got to look, you know, first where all the problems come from, too. I'm not an educated, sorry, I'm not an educated person. I don't know how to speak very good. But those are just some of the concerns I have. And as a citizen of Atomo, you know, I just want to help out.
Well, I just got two quick comments. One would be if you have concerns about the schools and stuff, you're encouraged to go to school board meetings because those are open.
I've been invited, and I am going to go to them, so.
So you need to voice your concerns at the school board meetings if you have any concerns about the school system. And then the other question, just so I'm clear, is your concern that you still don't feel like you've been given enough final decision about whether you can buy these properties or not, or am I not understanding it?
It's a, it's a little bit of everything, but I just want to know if I'm going to be able. I just want some some sort of resolution, whether I can buy and purchase them or not. And it's not because I, with the person I have my building right now, I'm having an issue, which is a different whole story. But, you know, I want to do my own thing where I don't have to worry about a landlord. I want to, I want to put something that promotes, hey, look, look at that nice new building. Or, you know, and I want, I do want to say hi to all these people. I know we're we're being watched. In Des Moines, they've been coming over here, I think I told you one time, and they came again, you know, and that's what I want. I want people to reinvest in Atomo. You know, I, when they told me they were from, I'm going to be honest, they told me they were from Des Moines. I was like, what are you doing here, you know? And that's sad because it's like, sometimes that's just our reaction. But then, you know, I talked to them and I thank them for, I guess we're we're getting loud. And every time we're getting bigger and bigger crowds, and sometimes there's nowhere to 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 walk or dance, you know?
Since since Mr. Simonson's not able to be here tonight, do you have any clarification or anything that you can offer Phil, or should he just talk to Zach?
I think I can probably offer a little bit of clarification for that, at least for, not not necessarily from the communication perspective between yourself and and Zach. But I would offer some clarification on some of the, or most of the other points regarding the properties. I do know what properties you're talking about. And fortunately or unfortunately, I've been kind of in that mix for several years now. So I think I can say, you know, I, from a strategic standpoint, the the city of Atomo has very, very much historically reserved properties where they they have future development plans. I mean, heck, we just went through this process a few months ago for a couple of residential projects that were city-owned properties that we were waiting until there was something that was advantageous for the entire community. And that's really, you know, when you're talking about city-owned lots, it's really for the greater good of the community, not necessarily for the next-door neighbor or for that particular neighborhood in some cases, but for the greater good of the community, if that makes any sense. So that's, that's kind of been the the policy and procedure for the city of Atomo, at least for the last seven years that I've been on city council, is, you know, we we do hold those properties until, especially commercial or industrial properties. We hold those until there's something that meets meets what the vision of the city is. And we just went through the the comprehensive planning process for the city of Atomo over the the course of the last couple of years, and that was just finalized this year. And in conjunction with that, there were several partner organizations in the in the city that that spent several thousands of dollars over the last two years doing environmental impact studies, doing master planning studies for those parcels of land with the intentions of moving the the rail connection points more down towards Iowa Avenue and the highway. That way we could free up some of that semi-traffic downtown, which again is for the betterment of the entire community because you don't have trucks that on brand-new roads that we just constructed that are that are far in excess of of the capacity of that road. So I know from from a general public standpoint, sometimes that doesn't make sense. Well, you know, there's a property there. It's just sitting there doing nothing. Why can't I, why can't I put a business in in that, or why can't I build a house on that, whatever the case may be? But that that has really been the practice, especially, you know, since this, this is an area that is pretty much right downtown. And there, there are a lot of strategic initiatives that are going on in that general area. The number one that will, that that will protect the the assets that we've spent the last few years. I mean, literally millions of dollars that have been spent in the downtown district to put new roads in, to make sure that we have no semi-trucks going in downtown, things like that. So I, and again, I don't want to touch on the communication. That that really is a situation to talk about with Administrator Rath and and Zach Simonson. But just from, just from the structural perspective, the planning perspective, I would say for the time being, it it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, I guess, to me who the who the group is or individual or whatever that would want to look at that building. I think that's something that needs to be vetted by all of the people, the planning and zoning, the 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 funding partners that have invested in the research for that area before anybody makes a decision to sell that property at the city level. Because again, you know, we're talking about a piece of, a couple of pieces of land, really, that that we've spent a lot of time and a lot of money and and a lot of resources into making sure that that land goes to the absolute best use for the entirety of the community.
My my question, and and I thank you for for that information. The only thing that that I have is that, why I'm here is because when I spoke to him the last time, he pretty much said that he wouldn't see why I couldn't purchase him.
Yeah, and and again.
He's seen it, and he said, I don't think there's, there should be anything that shouldn't allow you. So that's why when he just out of out of the blue said, I'm not going to sell him because it's a metal building and the parking lot, that's why I'm like, okay, well, okay, but there's got to be a code. And and I'm not, I'm not going to fight it. I just want to express the situation.
Yeah, I, I kind of, I.
I understand.
I understand your frustration.
100%.
But I just wanted to explain the 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 rationale that any of us would have if that was to come to us is, does that meet the the use of the the community as a whole? And does it protect the assets that we've already built there? So just from that perspective, that's the explanation that I would give.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just say, I apologize if if your initial conversation, if if you came away from that thinking that it was a yes or that he had given you a green light. Because I, I mean, I've worked with Zach enough that I don't think he intended to do that. He may have said, hey, this might be a project that can work. Let's see the design. Let's see what you have. Let's look into it a little bit more, you know, without knowing any more information. It's hard for him to give a hard yes or hard no on something, unless it's an absolute, hey, that doesn't fit in the the zoning, it's not the the right fit.
And see, that's what I was wondering, if if just went right there and then, no, it's not possible the the way. That would have just left me at peace. Okay, well, I, you know, I understand. But, yeah, and and sometimes me leading, like, I understand things like a different way to maybe. But, you know, it seemed to be reassured. But it's, it's, it's fine. I thank you, Phil. And sorry for interrupting.
So that's okay. So I was just going to say, you know, if there was a miscommunication there, I apologize on behalf of of Mr. Simonson. I don't think he intended to lead you on, but sometimes you just have to know more about the project before you can see if it's going to fit or not. And I think that's probably what he was intending to do, is get more information, see what it would look like, see how it might fit. And to Councilman Rose, you know, points, when we're looking at a larger picture, once you see some of that, is it something that's going to fit in there or not? And, you know, once you see that, that that plays into it. Are you going to put something that has a lot of traffic in a residential area, semi-traffic, things like that? Most likely, you're going to try to avoid that. So there's, there are just some things that that play in once you actually see the answers to some of those questions.
And whenever you guys have time, just give me a call and we can go through. Or if.
And if there's still anything unclear in your mind, I would encourage you to make another appointment to talk to Mr. Simonson.
Nope. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
I got a comment before you sit down, sir. I just want to tell you, I like your drive.
Thank you, sir.
And and I like your positive attitude, and and I love the fact that you brought your kids here tonight. We need more people.
That's, that's our future right there.
And one more thing, I think you're selling yourself short when you say you're not a good speaker because I think you're a good speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe anybody else indicated they wanted to speak on a non-agenda item. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which would be a report from the mayor, city council to the public. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending tonight's city council meeting. We appreciate your attendance and your input.